Good call.
Okay. So, okay, welcome everyone. We'll go ahead and call the meeting in order. Our first item, item two, after the call, the order, installations or corrections to the agenda. The first correction to the agenda is we are dropping item six. Catherine is not feeling well, so we will make that.
Todd, we lost your sound.
Lamar, I thought I saw you talk, but I'm not hearing you.
Oh, we lost your sound the last.
Okay, am I back? Am I back on?
You are now, yes.
Okay, just, yeah, I'll try to watch my screen and see if I, my internet's getting a little flaky or anything. So, yeah, you got the dropping item number six. Okay, is there any other additions, dilations, or corrections to the agenda? Okay, hearing none. Do we need to approve this correction, Julia? Or can we just move on from here?
The item that's not business is that you're referring to?
Yeah, since we're dropping item six, do we need to actually approve the agenda?
I think we'll just, no, I don't believe so.
Okay.
That's just informational item.
Okay, thanks. I just, I thought so, but I just wanted to make sure.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Our next item is the approval of our, of our March ninth, twenty twenty one regular meeting minutes. Do we have any additions or corrections? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion.
This is Gregory. I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes as submitted.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. We approved the minutes from our March ninth, twenty twenty one regular meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. All right.
Any opposed? Five zero. Our next item is item four. Those within the public who wish to comment on items not on the agenda, I believe we have one person. A Sherri Hopper. Julia, I'm not seeing her. On, is she on?
I believe the name says Crystal Bond two.
Just, okay, yeah. So, yeah, Sherri. Like to address the commission, you're on.
Hello, everyone. So, we are, just wanted to very briefly talk to you guys about, we're going to be purchasing the firehouse. And we are interested in turning it into some type of a wedding venue. We sent over Julia just some preliminary ideas of what we were going to do, and we were just wanting to get everyone's thoughts on it, see if it's gonna work, I guess.
Commissioners, do you have any thoughts? I mean, basically, if, as long as we have the correct zoning on it, if it's not the correct zoning, we may have to look at a potential rezoning. And we'll have to have the staff review that for us to make sure that it's zoned properly for what you're wanting to do.
Okay. I think the, the issue, I think that Julia has cleared it up with this was parking, that we would be allowed to use public parking for the venue. We also, we own four homes up there that are short-term rentals. So, we're hoping that, you know, a lot of the people that come will stay at the homes as well, so that will alleviate some of the parking issue.
Yeah, the, the thing I would maybe suggest that you check into would be El Paso County Health. Make sure that septic systems are.
Yeah, we, we've already spoke to them, and we spoke to an engineer about putting in two, three thousand gallon holding tanks, as opposed to the one thousand gallon one. Drive on, so they would be in the driveway right where the one, the one that is there now would be. And the, the only other thing that I think would probably need approval would be, we would like to put a rooftop area on it, of course, you know, engineered and through regional building, of course.
So, you're aware that it's basically a three entities system. It's Green Mountain Falls, it's Spike speak Regional Building, and El Paso County Health.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Yeah, I would think that when the time comes, we just work with our staff and and, and we review it against whatever codes we have in effect at the time.
Okay.
Go from there. Wish all the best of luck on it.
Oh, you think it's going to be a real asset to the, to the community? You know, we love Green Mountain Falls very much, and even though we don't have voting rights or anything up there, we love it, and we spend a lot of time up there, and I think it'll be an asset to the city along with, you know, tax dollars that the city will benefit from just by having that building up there. And, and it's, and it's going to be beautiful. It's not going to look anything like it looks now.
Okay, sounds, sounds good. Like, say, when the time comes, we'll just work with our staff and we'll get everything into the planning commission and then pretty much go from there.
Okay, maybe, yeah, maybe next time we actually get to meet everybody in person. We were sitting at, we were actually sitting at town hall, and I was like, wait a minute, this must be Zoom.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's, we're still doing Zoom meetings at some point. Hopefully, in the future, we'll be able to resume with the face-to-face meetings.
Okay. Is there any negative feedback that we would get from any of you guys on that? You know, we're just, we're just trying to make sure we've got everything in line.
I'll open that up for the rest of commissioners.
This is, this is Gregory. I'm just glad to see the building is progressing, is not going to sit there empty. I'd rather have it in use and improved, so you've got no negatives for me on that.
Thank you. Our idea is to kind of go the more traditional firehouse, so either like a brickstone or brick on the exterior, potentially doing a mural, which we'd be super open to suggestions on the east side of the building.
On the big wall upstairs. So, yeah, it's going to be beautiful, I think, just especially coming right into Green Mountain Falls, getting to see that, and then come around the lake. It's going to be beautiful. It's kind of been an eyesore for a long time, so we're excited to, you know, really make it look nice. Big glass doors on the front, and it's, yeah, it's going to be really beautiful. The design's really, really coming out well.
No, I just want to say that it's part of our comprehensive plan to encourage new businesses to come in to town. And so, I think this is a great fit for what we're trying to do as a community, so welcome and congratulations.
Thank you.
Yeah, this is Paul. You may, I'll just add my comments. The others, good luck. It sounds like a fabulous business. Look forward to seeing the full plan, as Todd mentioned, and helping work through the process.
Thank you.
Fantastic.
Okay. If there's nothing else. Yeah, go ahead.
Todd, I'd like to suggest that it, that we open it up to the public members that are on the call. I'm not sure that everyone knew they were supposed to email, because I think they thought it was going to be an open public forum comment, so I just wonder if that would be possible to do.
Yeah, basically, anyone on the Zoom call can join into the, into our public workshop. I'm, hang on a minute, I want to see how many people we actually have. With the numbers of people, I'm, I don't know if it's going to make sense to try to temporarily dismiss the meeting and then go into the workshop and then turn around and come back, but with the, with the numbers that we have, it almost looks like we could pretty much go straight into it. Yeah, that's, I think that's what I'm thinking. Where's Julia? Julia, I don't know if we're, I don't really know if we're going to need all the breakout rooms with the number of people that we have. We can probably just stay in session and, and continue on. What are your, what are your thoughts from staff?
I'm, I'm guessing that we've closed the public testimony. Is that where we are in the agenda?
Yeah, I'm getting close to closing public testimony. I'm just looking.
Um, Zach, Zachary Trainer has a small, a presentation, a small PowerPoint presentation, and Nina's here. And I, I always defer to you and the commission. The breakout groups are set, and we can do three groups of four, well, with staff in them. That's up to, that's up to you and the commission.
Yeah, I'm looking and I'm seeing one, two, three, four. Maybe four or five folks from the public here, and if we basically kind of suspend their session and then try to only have two commissioners in each, we're going to have two commissioners and one person from the public, it looks like, almost. So, I'm kind of wondering, commissioners, thoughts?
God, this is Gregory.
Yeah.
I'm feeling the same way you are. I think we, we, it's a small enough group where we'll have enough interaction and enough good ideas. I'm not seeing a breakout as a benefit.
Okay.
Great.
Agreed.
Julia, did we have anyone else that, that was on for public comment?
Nobody that contacted me, but I encourage you to ask if anyone is here for it to give public testimony.
Okay. Any other members of the public at, at this time, if you'd like to give some testimonies, to kind of wave your hand, get our attention, and we'll get you unmuted. And I'm not seeing any, Julia. So, if that's the case, we'll go ahead and close out item number four and move into item number five, our public workshop, community input meeting for our zoning and land use code rewrite, and Zach, I believe you have a presentation for us, correct?
Yeah, I just have a quick presentation here, and then we can go into our discussion.
Okay.
All right, can everyone see that? Hopefully, yeah, all right. All right, so objectives of this quick presentation would be to communicate highlights of the, the survey that we put out. I won't go through the entire survey findings. You're certainly welcome to do that. We have that posted on our webpage, which we'll talk about in a second. To listen to public feedback and identify key themes, that was kind of the main objective, and then to answer questions about the process. So, just to give a status update of where we're at with the project, the contract was awarded. I came on in January, so thank you for the job. I appreciate it, Green Mountain Falls. We went ahead and kicked off that project during the planning commission regular meeting on March ninth. The planning and land use office produced a letter and a survey, which we made available online and as hard copies. The survey closed at the end of last week, but if people want to still give feedback, we still very much want to hear that. So, in order to do that, people can visit the webpage that we launched that has a lot of the information related to the project, and I just have a visual on the right-hand side there to, to help people navigate there. So, at the Green Mountain Falls main page, you would just scroll to departments and then down to planning and land use, and then over to zoning code rewrite. So, with that said, as I said, the full survey results are available on that page. I'll just kind of hit some highlights just to kind of let you know where we're at. So, we had seventeen people answer the survey before it closed. We had kind of an even split as far as how familiar people are with the code. And then, as far as the question of what items should be reviewed by the planning commission, there was quite a range of responses. I won't read through every quote here, but we, we saw a, a range from people saying, you know, there should be very little to no items to kind of keep it the same or somewhere in the middle, to other people saying that new constructions and any issues dealing with zoning should go in front of the planning commission. And then we saw, and I'll go back here, simplify as a, a theme that came up during the review here as well. And then kind of the other side of the coin, so what types of items or applications should be reviewed and approved by staff through the city planning office? Again, we kind of saw a range here, but some ideas or themes that did kind of pop up were things like fences, sheds, and decks and things of that nature. But again, we had kind of a range of differences of opinions on that. And then, the next question here I'll just highlight is, would you like to see different zoning regulations based on land use and lot size? So, we had kind of a split here with the majority of people that responded saying, yes, and I would like to see. And I can go through the answers that we heard from that, so possibly expand setback requirements, strictly adhere to non-conforming lot restrictions. New standards to cover lots under five thousand square feet, very, very few zoning regulations. I prefer a mixture. Another person said, I would like to see zoning regulations based upon grade from the lowest disturbance to the highest. Doesn't make much sense for someone to need an erosion control plan with a flat property. I would also like to see maximum lot coverage as a way to limit stormwater runoff. Also, zoning needs to support the comprehensive plan. There is a need to create a long-term revocable permit where annual fees would not be required. And again, that theme of simplify that kept coming up, came up again, sewer system, and then individual circumstances, regulations on VRBO properties. And then the, the last question I'll highlight here is if you could make a change to the land use code, what would it be? Those first two options, so clarity around permitting, and then standards presented in a table rather than written descriptions were popular answers, and then I'll just go through the others that we had as well. So, we had people say, are they available to look at online? We had a person say, it was determined by town attorney, planning commission can't approve or disapprove paint color for houses. We are not an HOA. Fewer or no regulations for updating old properties such as replacing decks, fences, windows, that can be accomplished by family without having to hire an engineer. Requirements based upon grade wildfire mitigation, stormwater requirements based upon lot coverage, ability for existing property owners to deal with erosion without going through the town, ability to easily put up a trail on private property if using Trail Org. And again, this was another theme that came up was fire mitigation, so require fire mitigation through non-combustible building materials, require compliance with state, federal, and insurance standards for fire mitigation through non-combustible zones around the structures and mitigation of dead diseased trees as a condition of property titled transfer. And then this was a, a point that came up as well in some of the other responses and email feedback as well. So, please make sure that the code is enforceable. What is the point if it is not being enforced post-permit? I also went ahead and put the written responses that we had for all of the questions, as well as email feedback into a Word Cloud, so we could kind of see the frequency of common words that came up, so we could kind of see what concerns are in the community. So, we see concerns around fire, erosion, decks, fencing, things that you probably would have already guessed. So, that is also available on the, the page that I mentioned before, along with the full results, so you're all welcome to view those. And then, the plan was to go into those small groups, but it sounds like we are just going to kind of have one group discussion here. So, I can go ahead and go through the, the kind of questions, if that's helpful. All righty. So, what is one topic from the presentation that resonated with you? What is challenging about the existing code and what would make it easier to use? Do you agree with preliminary survey results? Some application should be approved administratively using specific guidelines instead of requiring a public hearing process. What types of housing and commercial development is most appropriate in Green Mountain Falls? Some themes have been identified include density, building use and height, zoning designations, environmental constraints, parks and open space, and natural hazards. And I don't know if Nina wanted to add anything.
Yeah, so I, I thank you, Zach. And, you know, Williams, for those of you who haven't met me virtually yet, helping out with this land use code rewrite. I pasted these questions into the chat box, and what we were going to do if we went into breakout rooms, which I still feel like we should do in this setting, which I feel like is, that's what the planning commission wants to do, is go through each question, spend a few minutes on each one in order, and, and kind of open it up. You know, asking the first question, seeing if there's anyone who wants to give input on that question, and then move to the next, if that's still okay to everyone, for everyone.
Yeah, Nina, let's, as we go through each question, let's ask for public input first, and then we'll ask for input from any of the commissioners, if that's okay.
Oh, yeah, that's actually a good idea. So, just to also recap, you know, Zach just went over the survey, and that's part of the community engagement process that was out for at least a month and distributed to everyone. And then this is the next step right here, where we, we picked these questions to help facilitate, best facilitate to get input from people, so that's their, their word in that certain way to direct for that. So, again, it's the next, that the next step. So, the first question is, again, what is one topic from the PowerPoint that we just, that Zach just showed you that resonated with you? And what are some challenges you've experienced with the existing code, and what would make it easier to do the right thing? And so, I'm not trying to take over your chair, chairman, so if you want, if you want to call the public or if one does have public raise their hand, and we can have them, anyone add any initial reactions, and we really just want this to be casual to let everyone feel comfortable sharing their, you know, input knee-jerk reactions. That's the way, well, I think it's, we think that's the best way to get the community's feelings in addition to the survey and everything else we're doing.
Yeah, before we get too carried away, is someone going to go ahead and take notes on what the public is is responding with and the commission responding with?
I'm happy to, to put up a whiteboard or a Word doc, and I'm, I know that Zach's pretty handy with the notes, if that's something that would work best. Let us know.
So, between the two of you, let's make sure you, you, between the two of you were capturing the input. And, you know, what I would suggest is, we just kind of take this piece meal at a time. So, with the first one is, what is one topic from the PowerPoint presentation that resonated with you? Give folks in the public an opportunity to comment first, and then give commissioners.
Thank you.
Opportunity. So, anyone in the, in the public like to comment? And. Okay.
Hi, this is Anne Esch, and I just have a question. You know, someone mentioned sewer system as a concern. Our properties were built a hundred and eight years ago, and we have cesspools. We only use them in the summers because they're very small, and, but that is a looming problem, and I don't know, we have to obey the health department code now, as I understand. And does, does Green Mountain Falls have any further regulations? I know this has been a problem, you know, when Dick Bratton was alive, and we were dealing with, you know, somebody bought a little property and there wasn't enough room for a modern thing. I just thought, well, that does resonate with me just as a resident. I just throw that out. It's been a topic for many, many years about sewer systems, because we'd probably need a lift station to go up to Woodland Park, or I don't know how it would be accomplished, but I won't say anything more except that resonated with me. Thank you.
Okay, yeah, and that's, that is correct. That's one of my personal concerns as well as the, basically, the sewage treatment, existing sewage treatment in town. I'm pretty sure, not a hundred percent sure, that the El Paso County Health Code says that once a system fails, you have to go in with the latest and the greatest. And the latest and the greatest, you know, ours is only a year old from a brand-new house, so if you want to see how much real estate that is, that's, it's, it takes up a lot of real estate. In fact, the brand-new property being built close to us, I believe they have to have theirs pumped on a regular basis because they don't have a leach field. They didn't have enough room for a leach field. So, that is, that is a concern. We do not have, to my, at least to my knowledge, we do not have any additional code requirements for septic systems, other than basically, we have to have them, and we rely on El Paso County Health to administer the ones in El Paso County. I'm not entirely sure about the, the Teller County. You know, since we're, we kind of span both counties. Julia or Zach, would you happen to know if, if a property is in Teller County that we then revert to the Teller County Public Health for the septic? Okay, yeah, it sounded like, looked like Julia was shaking her head, yes, so. So, yeah, we were basically rely on the county health departments. And, yeah, it can be, it can be an issue. But, yeah, right now, we do not have additional code requirement within the town. So, okay. Any other public comment?
Todd, this is David Douglas.
Go ahead, David.
I guess we're still on one there about things that resonated. As the chairman of the fire mitigation committee for Green Mountain Falls, you can probably tell that you know, some of the comments on the survey were coming, well, I, I put quite a few comments about fire mitigation. But, but really what resonated was a comment that somebody made that, you know, if, if we're not going to enforce things, we don't need to have it in the code. And, and that too often is what we're finding in, in fire mitigation is that we're really not following through and enforcing the code that exists. And, and, you know, we are at a high risk in Green Mountain Falls. We have so many old, hundred-year-old structures that are not hardened against fire. And, you know, we really need to be very clear about what is reasonable from a code standpoint to require people to do, to harden their property against fire. And, and I realize, you know, it's impractical to sight of people. We've got a hundred-year-old log cabin. You're going to have to put a fire-resistant roof or a fire-resistant siding or whatever. But there are a number of things that, you know, we can do and should be requiring and be willing to enforce. And, and one of those enforcement issues really is the fuels mitigation side of things, and, you know, our, our we have Green Mountain Falls property that needs a fuels mitigation, and we're working on that now. But, you know, the things that residents can and should do, we, we really need to make sure that we are addressing that in the code in such a way that we, we mean business. And so, it, it has to be something that's practicable and reasonable. And at the same time, assures at least a frontline defense for mitigating wildfire.
Okay, thank you. Something I'm going to add, I think it was Dan was over here checking out something over here in the, in the ravine over off Iona. There is a wildland. There is a wildland urban interface codes that have already been developed. And right now I have a couple of phone calls and the folks to see if we can possibly get someone out and come talk to the planning commission about those to see if those are something we'd want to either adopt in whole or in part. And so right, I'm, I've got a couple of phone calls into some folks to see if we can get someone to kind of come out and at least give us a presentation on what, what things are involved with, with maybe possibly using those codes. So, okay, any more public comment on was the one topic from the presentation that resonated? Rocco.
Yeah, thanks, Todd. This is Rocco Blazi. I welcome the opportunity to kind of reexamine the code. When I moved here 15 years ago, I didn't know the town had codes. And I learned about them as I've lived here, but I think the town should do a better job of promoting the fact that we have codes and that people have responsibilities living in this town. I think there is some ignorance among especially the newer folks coming in, but also some of the longer term residents. So I think some kind of PR campaign would be beneficial to kind of clear up some of the ignorance. A lot of people don't know that there is a code. I do like the idea of keeping it simple and making it enforceable. The Colorado Rules of Civil Procedure 106A2. They explain how a town's failure to enforce its code can open the municipality up to a lawsuit. So we can't be joking around with this, or this could cost the town some big bucks. I do like the idea of maybe moving some of the approvals to the administration level. But I think overarching really health and safety, I think are the two big things that the code should address. And then looking at the comprehensive plan recommendations, there's one, one of the measures for monitoring on page 80 talks about environmental health cesspools converted to septic systems. Creating an inventory, inventory, the number of properties with septic permits. And we don't understand the scope of the issue unless we do some kind of inventory. It may also be beneficial to look at how many undeveloped lots are still in town. And how many of those could be buildable based on current land use code and septic requirements? I think the big thing is health and safety. Keep it simple and keep it enforceable.
Okay, thanks, Rocco. Any other public comment? On this first item here? And I'm not seeing anyone. Julia, are you?
Sorry, I have my screens all over the place.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I kind of do too. So I'm bouncing back and forth trying to.
But we do, Zach and I do have the chat. So if someone wants to put just flag us in the chat, raise a hand.
Okay, while you're doing that, I'm gonna move over to the commissioners. Commissioners, do you have any comments on the, on anything that resonated with you?
And Todd, this is Sean. One of the things that I run into in town, people often tell me that the process permitting gets slowed down and gets put off from meeting to meeting and they have a tough time completing projects. Based on some of the requirements that we have. So I think simplifying is kind of falls in there. And would probably benefit anybody that's doing a development in town.
Thanks, Sean. Anyone else? If not, we'll kind of move on to this next item. What are some challenges you have experienced with the existing code? We'll kind of go through the public first. And Julia, I'm not seeing any. If not, we're gonna move over into the move over into the commissioners. And if I've missed someone in the public, just wave and flag us down. Commissioners, do you have any comment on challenges?
This is Gregory. I'd like to comment.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, we have some, and somebody correct me if I'm wrong. About 700 plus or minus existing homes in Green Mountain Falls. And I would estimate that 80% of those are more than 50 years old. And if you got a house like mine, there's no drywall in it. It's wood inside and out. I guarantee it wouldn't last 12 minutes in a fire. The whole house is three stories high. And there's something we need to mention is all these property owners have property rights. And we as a planning commission and as board of trustees and mayor exist to, to serve the needs of our community. And there's a lot of people that live here that couldn't afford to buy here now and live here again. They, they bought 20 years ago and their homes are out of their price range and they're retired. We have to be sensitive to the kinds of homes that exist here. And there's a lot of property line issues throughout the entire Green Mountain Falls. And we run into setback issues and, and side yard issues frequently. That we need to take a hard look at and say, how best can we serve the people that own these properties? And help them you know, mitigate to the best of their ability. And a lot of them don't have the ability to do you know, hard, hardened siding against a fire or a new roof. It's going to be really difficult for 80% of the people that live in Green Mountain Falls. So when we're talking about zoning and we're talking about land use. I haven't identified four lots in this entire town that are buildable. I don't know if that's correct or if somebody can chime in on that and correct it. There's not a lot of places to develop or go forward with any kind of development. Todd, you're one of the newer homes in town, you know? And you had to find a lot where you could build on and it was tough, right? So how we best serve our community should be foremost in our mind. And we, in order to best serve our community, we have to understand that community. Understand the homes that exist there and understand any potential there is for any kind of development. We've just gone through an annexation and no idea if there's any other annexations available that would be buildable. Even south of us here, there's, there's some properties that are buildable, but they're not in Green Mountain Falls. And so my comment summarized is be consistent in what we do, that it serves the community. And that we have to know that community to serve it best.
Okay. Thanks, Gregory, for bringing up those points. Other commissioners? Okay, since I am a recent builder. We really didn't experience challenge, too many challenges per se out, you know, the septic was a big challenge. We had a big challenge when we had a, the topography for our property came in a little off. And we had to go through the approval process for, for an engineered retaining wall instead of just a couple of four foot walls. So that was something that, that was kind of a, a problem. So the, with the town existing code the issues we have were more along the lines of getting the approvals, having the, the bait time to, to get it in front of the commission. To get things in front of the board of trustees, to get the response back from the engineer for our grading erosion control plan and our, and our rock retaining wall we had on the back. And so those were our three basic challenges, at least I was aware of. Our builder tended to keep a lot of things to himself. He didn't want to bother us with a lot of problems, but I do know we had the, the issue with the retaining wall. And we had a and that we had some issues with trying to get things through the system. That I think probably caused this along the lines of, I think it was probably I'm estimating at least a couple of months delays at different points. We had about a month delay at the start and then we had a month, about a month delay with the rock retaining wall. And so there were a couple of delays that were, that came about because of that. But that was the only thing really with the town code. The other kind of came in with the, with the septic system and, and the additional work, we had to do that to make it compliant and be able to get the permits. If there's nothing else, anyone else?
I just want to make a couple of short comments. In serving on this commission that, that there are people who come before us trying to do the right thing. And I love this focus on making a lot of people who are really frustrated. They don't understand what's required. Their builder doesn't understand what's required. And I do think simplifying it. And as Gregory talked about, understanding who is in the town and make it easy for them to do the right thing quickly. We just have a short period of time, a lot of times because of weather, for people to be able to get their building projects done. And, and if it's delayed a month or so, it can mean it's delayed a year. So that's, that's really frustrating for people. And if we could do some of this without having to come before the commission, get it approved by the board of trustees, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And just take some of the bureaucracy out of the process. I think that it's going to help people do the right thing and help them do it easily without frustration. I know there's some some businesses who've gotten really frustrated and they just kind of gave up because they just couldn't figure out how to comply. So they didn't spend the extra money they were going to spend to improve their business property. So I'm seeing that happen too much and that's probably the, the biggest challenge that I've seen since being on this commission.
I think Mayor Newberry had a digital hand up.
Yep, I do, Todd. Can I go ahead and speak?
Yes.
All right, I just wanna I just want to remind everyone that there's a few things that are coming up that aren't part of land use code. They're part of Green Mountain Falls ordinances. And this isn't, this discussion isn't the same as code enforcement. And especially in some of the, the comments that I've seen written. I think we just need to make sure that we're focused on what's good for land use code. And, and how it interfaces with ordinances, but also recognize they're not the same thing, especially when it comes to enforcement. Overall, I do agree that a lot of things can be simplified. We can certainly have things approved administratively, but we need to set down clear guidelines so that everyone understands exactly what they're approving and, and what the guidelines are. Otherwise, you're asking people to really dance in a lot of gray areas that they may not be prepared for.
Okay. Thanks, Jane. I was, I don't know if you've noticed, but I'm having periodic unstable internet for whatever reason. So if I cut in and out, that's, that's why it comes back after about three or four seconds, but just FYI. Okay, if there's no other comments from commissioners. Public, we'll move on to our next item. Which is what would make it easier to do the right thing? I think we've had some comments come through. But if anyone from the public would like to comment further on that. Flag us down and we'll get you going.
Can I, can I ask a question?
Yeah, go ahead, Ann.
You know, I was gonna ask, since Jane mentioned that about the differences. Is a variance part of something? You know, as Gregory mentioned, variances are used to help accomplish insoluble problems. Is that part of the, is that an ordinance or is it a code? I don't even know.
I'm gonna let our staff answer that one. I have my own opinion. I think my opinion might be wrong.
Julia, do you want me to answer that?
Sorry, I'm switching screens, please.
Okay. I also want. Mayor was, yeah, the mayor is, the mayor is correct what she was explaining and ordinances and most ordinances are in your code, but what we're, we're rewriting the land use code. So those are just a certain chapters in, within your code. But generally, you know, taking in this input helps from a larger standpoint, because I guess I agree that the land use code is not the same as how we're going to be enforcing, but again, what you're all saying is how do we make the land use code simpler to understand and more streamlined? And that's why we're, we're doing with this project. So there's a land use code, which is a part of your larger town code, which is your, or, or most ordinances are incorporated into your town code. And then some of those are your land use code.
I, I'm not sure that I, I didn't capture Ms. Esch's question. And I'm happy to write it down.
Yeah, it was, it was basically our variances. And maybe I better have you go ahead and say it. I had it on the tip of my tongue and I.
I don't think I stated it very well either. I was just wondering, you know, we have ordinances and we have codes. And is a variance? Which is it?
A, the, a variance is something that's very, should be very rare that is it within your land use code. So it, and it says that, you know, in certain circumstances, somebody can request a variance or a deviation from the land use code and, but there's very specific factors and if they're, you know, they're, or and we're gonna, we're gonna work on making that clear, but a variance is a section of your code that says you can deviate from the code under certain circumstances. I, it should be used very rarely. That's, um, that's.
Well, one thing I've, I've noticed just, you know, for so many years here. That those need to, we need them a lot. Just because of the narrow roads and so forth, you know, people have encroached. But usually when you need a variance, then you have to notify all the people. There's a public hearing and all those things. I wondered if that could be handled administratively. That might be an idea. So, thank you.
Yeah, that's a really helpful feedback that we're trying to, what we heard from the surveys, a, a, a lot of people are saying that as well. Certain, in certain situations. If you have a very concrete, you know, objective factors in, in certain circumstances, like the ones you're identifying, it should probably be processed administratively because it also relates to the frustration that many people are having with the length of time of approvals in the public process. So that's something that we've identified consistently from the input that we've received. So that, that's very helpful feedback.
Thank you.
Okay, now we'll kind of move on to our commissioners. Do you have any comments on what would make it easier to do the right thing?
Hey, Todd, this is Paul. Just one thought on, and this kind of goes back to some of the marketing issues. I think when we're explaining. An issue to a landowner. We should explain it in terms of impacts on other landowners, public property, or some other public good. In other words, explain to it not, this is a rule and therefore you must follow this process, but this is how it can impact your neighbors, the town. The environment. And I think people are more receptive to that if they understand. That this is not bureaucracy for bureaucracy's sake, that there's a public good behind it that's protecting other people's property rights or some other public good.
Thanks, Paul. Anyone else? Okay, if not, we'll go ahead and move on to the next one. Do you agree with the preliminary survey results? And hang on a minute. And I'm gonna split that one into kind of two questions. Well, do you agree with preliminary survey results? And then the second part of that. Should some applications be approved administratively instead of requiring public hearing process? I think we have heard some comments on that, but we'll open it up to the public. With the first part, what do you agree with the preliminary survey results? Maybe it might be easier for someone to say, does anyone disagree? And if no one from public has commented on that, I'll move on to the commissioners. Oh, I hear, I see Rocco. Rocco's got his hands raised. Go ahead, Rocco.
I know, I have another comment. I think I think a seventeen response seventeen responses to the survey is is not a very good sample size for a town this size. But I think, you know, the folks who are interested typically will come to these meetings and I think we're kind of preaching to the choir. There's so many hundreds of other people who have equities in this that just don't understand. So I think, again, there's an education component, but looking at the survey results, how limited they were. I they were kind of all over the map. I did see some things about hazards and fire that. Were highlighted, I think, in that that diagram by Zach, the the letters were bigger. But it seemed like for many things that one person said, somebody else would have. Said something a little bit different. So I think I think with only seventeen results, it's hard to make generalizations.
Okay, thanks, Rocco. Any other member of the public? If not, we'll move on to the to our commissioners.
I I agree with simplifying, and this is one way to simplify to. Try to just approve some things administratively and speed it up. As I talked about, it it can be a long bureaucratic process and. And where it makes sense to approve some applications and make it clear. How we're going to do that and we have to figure out the logistics, but I do agree that that's something that would be a good idea.
Todd, this is Paul. Can I build on Lamar's comment? I think it's really important, and perhaps this is a bit too specific for this format, but I do think some of. The code requirements for the approval of decks. If there's not an obvious impact on structural integrity, you know, other property owners' rights, easements. Public property. I I think some of our requirements for a planning commission approval or recommendation for approval for a deck. Probably are a bit over the top and could be approved administratively without any downside impacts.
Thanks, Paul. Any other commissioners?
This is Gregory.
Yeah, go ahead, Gregory.
I was thinking along the lines of UBC. I mean, there's a universal building code. That all of America bases their individual circumstances on, and I was reading the El Paso County zoning code. It doesn't apply. We can't just adopt some code from somewhere else. I have some friends that live in a coastal area that's on a cliff and and it's like. How do you apply anything to that? It's so different than the rest of the world. We in Green Mountain Falls are quite a bit different than everywhere else, and we have some specific needs. I'm asking myself the question, why do we need to rewrite the code? And I and not from a negative standpoint. I'm looking at it and saying, yes, we have some specific needs we have to address here. That are unique and different from the rest of the world. We just can't adopt El Paso County codes and apply them here because they don't work. So we're really going to have to take a hard look at this and. There are going to be variances. There are going to be conditional use permits. There are going to be things that we have to do. To maintain the community that we have. You can't just come in here and bulldoze it and build a subdivision. It just doesn't work that way. And, you know, a lot of us bought here because we love this old. I love living in a historical building and. I love living in Green Mountain Falls because it's like this. So, yes, we do need to rewrite this code. Yes, it does need to be simplified. Yes, we do need to structure it so it goes a little faster. And again, it has to address the specific needs. Of these properties that exist here and in order to address that. I think it was Rocco that said we we need to do some further investigation. How many buildable lots do we have? How many properties do we have here that are older than? You know, fifty, sixty, seventy years? What percentage of these homes are in that category? And what happens to somebody when their deck falls down? And you have to rebuild it and it doesn't meet code and your cesspool collapses and you can't rebuild a cesspool. And that that's health department issues, but the zoning issues are are sort of the same. There there are some things here that will go away and never be able to be rebuilt. Because they're unsafe. And again, health and safety is a main concern of all of ours. So I I guess my comments are. In a universal sense, there's really nothing we can adopt that's already written. That in a zoning and land use category fits us. So we really better take a hard look at this and make sure it fits. Our community.
Okay, thanks, Gregory. Any other comments on that one? We've had some comments already on the. Approving things administratively. I'm just kind of going to kind of open us up in general. Do we have any other? General comments on approving things administratively? And we'll start with the public first and then move on to the commissioners.
I've got a question again. This is Ann. If if we agree that. Administratively. Or in any way, could our, can they override? A county regulation? You know, could we get a variance from the county, for instance, to solve some of our problems regarding? In my concern, you know, with our hundred and some year old houses with the cesspools. I think that I'm correct in saying this because. I represent Green Mountain Falls on the Pike's Peak Area Council of Governments. And I think the regulation is if the cesspool fails. You have to put in a septic system. Well, they they've already invented, believe it or not. A toilet that incinerates everything. But the ordinance in El Paso County requires that before you install that, you first have to put in a darn septic tank. Which you don't even need. So those little quirks, I don't know what power our little town would have. But there that's another idea. I'm kind of going all over the place, but I agree with Gregory that we are such a unique. Little place in a valley. That is is unique and we have unique problems that we want to keep it the way it is if possible. So that's just another idea about back to the cesspool difficulty that is looming. Thank you.
Thanks, Ann.
I'm if for everyone, and that includes Ms. Ash, who just made a comment and I just. I'm not sure that I capture it, but everyone is. Well, this will be a part of the record and we can correct it if if I'm not capturing your point accurately. Thank you.
I'd like to add my two cents worth and on trying to approve things administratively. I think we have an opportunity here to to maybe group things. With the things that have come in front of the planning commission so far, especially some of the like. Someone's been saying decks and fences and whatnot that don't change their footprint. You know, can that be done for the town piece administratively? I will say that I do know that decks for. You need to go in front of Pike's Peak Regional Building Department for the structural requirements. Because I have personally seen some decks in the area that at the house they're held in with like one or two nails and they're going to collapse. So the we don't have the expertise in town to really deal with the structural. Elements of some of these things, and so we do a lot of times have to rely on. The larger entities that do have the staff that that can help us out with the more complicated technical issues. But I'm definitely all in favor of trying to see if we can't group these things in this so that the the town's portion of it can be. Administratively administrative as much as possible. Okay, and we'll move on to. I think that's our our final item. Is what types of housing and commercial development is most appropriate in Green Mountain Falls? And then the question kind of goes into some things that we've seen already. But we'll kind of hear from the. I think my. Okay, we'll hear from the public first on that one. I thought my screen froze, so. Hopefully you all can hear me.
It looks like we lost the chair for a moment.
Yeah, Julia, my internet kind of went unstable, but it looks like I don't know if I'm not seeing any.
It looks like Rocco has a question or a comment.
Okay, yeah, someone may have to holler at me because I'm not seeing a lot of the videos. Go ahead, Rocco.
Okay, thanks. Thanks, Todd. Just looking at the comprehensive plan, I think it's probably good to start the discussion with the vision and the comp plan, which. Is an appropriately sized, safe community home to a mix of residential, commercial, recreational and cultural uses. That together generate a high quality of life. One of the specific strategies or actions. Update the land use code to allow higher downtown density, higher lot coverage and apartment spaces. Apartments above commercial spaces. There's also a strategy to incentivize downtown densification to promote more downtown businesses. So I think I think the cop plan kind of gives a good general overview. I know there was discussion during the comp plan about tiny houses. I believe the house that's being built. Up on Iona there by the the ravine that's looked being looked at for fire mitigation. That may fit the definition of tiny houses, but I think everything goes hand in hand with our with our limitations on septic systems. Does it make sense to build a tiny house when you have to have a huge lot to accommodate a septic system with a leaching field? Is it really cost effective? So that that comes into play. But I think I think the cop plan gives some gives some good overview of some direction for the town. I think the town does need to grow economically. As our costs grow unless the taxpayers are going to be footing a bigger and bigger property tax bill. To to keep our services the same as the costs increase.
Okay, thanks, Rocco. Any other members of the public like to comment? I'm not seeing any. Hands waving at me or not hearing anyone jump in, so we'll move on to our commissioners. Okay, I'm not hearing from the commissioners. I'm not seeing anything. I'll go ahead and chime in. Yeah, Rocco made a a good point. The limiting factors. Since we have built very recently that I see as far as building in our community are truly the one is the just the basic cost of building. The. And I know just recently the price of lumber just skyrocketed. So someone last saying that a year ago they were buying a four by eight sheet of plywood for eight dollars and now it's costing them forty. And so just the basic fundamental cost of of building. And then the other, at least in my opinion, limiting factor is the sewage. You you can come by our place and see how big the the amount of acreage we had to have for the. For the septic system. It took up probably a third of the building space. And that's just for a two bedroom. Home. So yeah, between the the multiple tanks and the pumps and the leach field. It just. It took it took up a lot of real estate. And not a lot of lots can handle that much. Real estate to get the especially to get the leach fields in. And I'm kind of hoping that technology advances to where we can possibly get some kind of. Smaller type of containment systems. That'll. Meet the environmental requirements that we need to meet. So, yeah. I see those as our as our biggest hurdles. So anytime we're talking higher density. The first thing that comes into play in my mind is. You know, how are we going to deal with the sewage? You know, I'm trying to, I don't know, trying to actually. Build or tap into a sewage treatment is cost effective, who knows? So, yeah, that's what I that's what I see as the two biggest things is is having recently built is just the basic cost and then the septic systems. I really don't see much the that we had to do in the town that were really any kind of roadblocks. Any other comments? Okay, one final thing I will say about this. We do have a budget for our land. Okay, uh, one final thing I will say about this, uh, we do have a budget for our land use code rewrite. I think it's, I believe, uh, it was still around the seventy thousand dollar point. Uh, we will do our best, uh, to try to stay within that budget and try to address as many concerns as we can. Uh, any closing comments from other commissioners on the, on our, uh, here?
Todd, are we going to get updates on what's been spent today and sort of what's projected with our budget?
Um, I don't have the, the what's been spent so far. I just know that the total budget was around seventy thousand and I, and I do know we have some, um, staff positions that are, that are looking into that or that are actually drawing from that. So I don't know how, what the, I don't know exactly where we're at today.
And we maybe get updates with our meetings each time with where we are on, on the budget?
Yeah, I see Julia taking notes. See, I, I think it would be prudent, uh, to make sure that we're, uh, addressing at least the, the heavy hitter items as much as possible and trying to keep within our, our allotment. And then there's also possibility, if we do have some heavy hitters, um, if we need to try to go get some additional funding. You know, we, we may have to keep that door open as well. Did you, okay, Rocco shared a message in the, in the chat. Looked at the notional schedule seems aggressive. Any concerns from the commissioners? Having, I think we're trying to get something in front of the, um, board of trustees, um, by the fall. I, you know, I, I, with what we have and, and where we're at today, I, I know there's going to be a lot of activity in May going for, uh, that the folks are going to be working pretty heavily on, on our, our codes. Then there's also the, the possibility of, um, you know, we, we, I'm thinking that as far as updates, we'll try to keep those within our, our, um, existing planning commission meetings. So we don't have to have a lot of, a lot more special meetings. But we may keep that door open as well for a, a special meeting to, uh, maybe kind of invite the public and see where we're at, but we'll see how that goes. But getting something in, into the, into the board of trustees by the fall, um, might be a little aggressive. But I'd rather have a little bit more of an aggressive schedule at this point than, than, um, just let it languish. Especially for trying to, uh, make sure we expend our funds that we have in this, in this fiscal year. So. Yes, okay, you got a message from Julia. Ask about special meeting in May, May twenty fifth for Nina and Zach's annotated outline if they are willing. So Nina and Zach, it looks like, um, we have a question for you. Uh, could you support a May twenty fifth, meeting for an annotated outline?
Yes, we can. I think, um, Julie's asking if the, if the, um, planning commission is available. So the next step, um, you know, like I said, we're working on, we've worked on community input, which will happen throughout. But the survey and this meeting is a big part of it as well as the website. And now I really, um, you know, you see a point where we start, you know, really showing what we're going to be amending and what our ideas are based on that input. So that next step is the annotated outline, what I call, it's really a framework of, of how we see the rewrite working as a whole based on, um, our experiences and, and you're also your input. And that, then the next steps after that are the drafting of the code in the, in the three installments that we explained. Um, so we're, we are wondering if May twenty fifth works for the planning commission for us to present that to you. The annotated outline, what we're calling it.
Yeah, uh, the commissioners would identify if they can't meet it. That would probably work best. I'm looking at my calendar.
Todd, this is Sean. I'll be out of town and unavailable on the twenty fifth.
Okay. Anyone else? So it sounds like the, it sounds like we could have a, uh, go ahead and have a special meeting minus Sean on the, on the twenty fifth, uh, go over the annotated outline.
Mr. Chairman, I'm, the twenty fifth is available as this second special meeting for the planning commission. Alternatively, if the commission wants to wait until the June regular meeting, that would be June eleven? No. Let me check. June eighth.
With the idea that we do want to move this process forward quickly, um, it makes sense to me to meet on the twenty fifth.
Anyone else have any, uh, preferences? Sean, you're probably prefer we'd have it on the eighth.
I'm fine with whatever works for everybody.
Okay. I'm, I'm good with the twenty fifth. And if, if folks are actually, what I would rather predicate it on is, are people actually ready to present? You know, if people are ready to present the annotated outline on the twenty fifth, then, okay, yeah, let's have it. But if it's, if it's pushing it and, and we need to wait another couple of weeks, I'm good with that too. So I'd say let's target the twenty fifth. And if things are ready, then, then, um, yeah, let's have a look at them.
It sounds good.
Okay, is there anything else on our workshop and community input meeting that we need to address? If not, we will go ahead and close out that item and move on to any housekeeping and announcements.
I believe we just had it in a more casual way.
Okay. Any other commissioners? Do you have any other housekeeping, uh, items or announcements? Okay, if not, then we will go ahead and adjourn this meeting at seven forty nine PM. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Seeing everyone.
Thank you.